Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-9. If other persons are doing the same, they must notify me at this time. Seeing none, we will have a roll call of members, please.
Counselor Golub?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Vice President Gilmore is absent tonight. Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas?
Here.
Counselor Toronzo?
Here.
President Bottomley?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a call. You have to announce someone.
And to stay in compliance with open meeting law, I'm announcing that we have one counselor. Counselor Bullock is attending remotely. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is voluntary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And if I could have someone read the motion on page four to suspend the rules of procedure?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive the rules of procedure, eight order and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order. Majority vote required.
I need a second?
Second.
Sorry, I wasn't sure who said that. And we will need a roll call vote to suspend those rules.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
Yep.
President Bottomley, do you wish to vote?
Yes. Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. The rules have been waived.
So we will move to motions, orders, and resolutions. The first one, which is to enter into executive session. And the reasons for this, the Greenfield City Council will enter into executive session for reason number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements to approve and review for release of the City Council Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes for the following dates. Council Executive Session Minutes, July 21, 2004, which was Executive Reason Number One; November 17, 2004, which was Executive Reason Number Two; August 17, 2005, Executive Reason Number Six; February 15, 2012, Executive Reason Number Three; April 20, 2016, Executive Reason Number One; January 17, 2024, Executive Reason Number One and Three. Council Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes, September 21, 2005, Ways and Means Committee, Executive Reason Number Two; January 28, 2008, Ordinance Committee, Executive Reason Number One and Reason Number Four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategy with respect to...
Reason Number Four.
And Reason Number Four. The City Council will reconvene to regular session upon the conclusion of this executive session. And if I could have someone read the motion on page 18 of the packet.
The City Council must move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter into executive session, Reason Number Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements to approve and review for the release of the City Council Subcommittee Executive Session Minutes for the following dates. July 21, 2004, Executive Reason Number One; November 17, 2004, Executive Reason Number Two; August 17, 2005, Executive Reason Number Six; September 21, 2005, Ways and Means Committee, Executive Reason Number Two; January 28, 2008, Ordinance Committee, Executive Reason Number One; February 15, 2012, Executive Reason Number Three; April 20, 2016, Executive Reason Number One; January 17, 2024, Executive Reason Number One and Three. And Reason Number Four, discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with a respect thereto. Majority vote required.
I need a second for that?
Second.
And I'll open this up for discussion. This is following our procedure to review regularly executive session minutes. And there were some found from several years ago. So we're trying to be in compliance and review our executive session minutes regularly. And the other reason is to talk about cybersecurity for the city. So those are the two reasons that we'll be going into executive session, just in case that got lost in all the verbiage. Any discussion on that? We'll take a roll call vote.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
Yep.
And does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We will... You need to adjourn by the time.
So we will go into executive session at 6:38 PM. And this will be in the side room, right?
Yep.
The room right over here. And we will return as soon as we're done with that session. 6:38 PM. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 17?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas is not at the rail at the moment. Counselor Toronzo?
Yep.
And does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously with counselors attending.
Next, we'll move to communications from Superintendent Schools and School Committee. Welcome, Superintendent Patino. And let me officially congratulate you on your appointment. And it's a big job. It's a difficult job. And I just want you to know, despite whatever sometimes the communication is, that we are rooting for you.
Thank you.
And welcome to the City Council.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you for having me. I have just two quick updates today. We are really trying to improve communications with our parents and families. We did a communication survey in March, and a lot of the feedback was just more access, more opportunity to find out what's happening with students and how they can attend events and where things are going to be. So we jumped into this decade and we launched social media. So if you're not following us on Facebook or Instagram, please do so. We also all have aligned our newsletters with Smore. It's an application that all our principals and myself are using, which allows translation into 20 different languages. So it's been well received thus far. You can find all of my updates on the website. We're also looking to have more community support at a lot of our events. Students would be very happy to see community members, not only at some of our sporting events, but any activities that are going on in our schools. So I kindly invite folks to come and attend when possible because community is what we are trying to build between the schools and all of you, and we would love to have you support our kids. The opening of school is right around the corner. Next Wednesday, grades one through 12 will begin school. It is a half day. Our kindergarten arrives on Friday, the 30th. And then our pre-K will start on Tuesday, September 3. Just a shout out to community members. Have patience. Buses will be back on the road. Please be very aware when those buses are stopped and their stop sign is on, so that our kids are safe getting on and off. And really pay attention in crosswalks. Federal Street, we have Federal Street Elementary and Greenfield Middle School, which are very busy crosswalks in the morning and the afternoon. And we would love people to pay attention and really keep our kids safe. We have meet and greet Monday night at all of our schools. AEL will have meet and greet from 4 to 5. That is a change from our school calendar. The school committee voted to approve that change at our last meeting because we have a lot of families that have pre-K and elementary kids, and they didn't want to have conflicting meet and greet times. So we were trying to accommodate. Elementary will be from 5 to 6. The middle school from 6 to 7. The high school from 7 to 8. I also want to just thank TravelCuz. We had a lot of requests last year from kindergarten families, how nervous our little ones are to get on a big yellow bus. So TravelCuz will actually have a big yellow bus at each elementary school during meet and greet. And they will be able to practice getting on, sitting on the school bus with their families at meet and greet. So I really appreciate them doing that for us. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Excellent. At the time that this was, this agenda was published, the Council had not set any agenda items to talk to the superintendent. I'll take questions, but just be aware, if it's a research question or if you want really information, you need to get this agenda item. We can't anticipate all questions, but just keep that in mind. So Counselor Toronzo?
This was definitely not reasonably anticipated, as I just found out about this yesterday. I'm a little concerned. I know that the whole rollout of the redistricting years are coming. I was very, I'll just use the word disturbed, to find out that there's one kindergarten class at Four Corners School, and it has 26 kids in that class, which to me is absolutely ridiculous. And I can't fathom, again, I've been cautioned when I've asked questions before from certain members that I should stay in my lane and stay out of it, because that's outside of our purview. This is in my purview as a citizen and a father of children in the school district. And I can, I have, I have a lot of friends who are teachers in multiple municipalities. They have never, ever heard of 26 children being in a kindergarten class, let alone another class. And I know people who work in Springfield, who work all throughout the valley. And that, to me, is absolutely asinine, and I question the quality of education and the stability that that will bring to a brand-new incoming kindergartner when we essentially, and I know it's all projection, but we fully funded the schools and what they asked for for this year. And the shortcoming of it was told to us by the former superintendent. It was covered. They're like 400,000 or whatever. They got it. We have this extra money from wherever Magic Accountant came from. And that is super concerning to me, because that is a delicate age, and it's just not, it's not the same across the board. And if it were happening, I'm just saying, if it were happening at any school, I'd have the same outrage about it. But I just question where that logic would come into, that there's going to be a solid education given to an incoming kindergartner with one teacher, and even with assistant staff there, one teacher to try to deal with not only the behavioral issues, but the educational issues for some of the most vulnerable students coming into it. I would, I mean, personally, I would rather see a 26-student eighth grade or a 26-student 10th grade, because even though there are behavioral issues there, they're not children. They're not coming in with the type of vulnerabilities that they have at five years old. And I just, I don't know. I don't know whose decision that was, but to me, it's a poor one. And I think it should have been expressed way before yesterday. And I appreciate, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be attentive, I appreciate the communications that have come in early. I think when I started seeing them, I was like, wow, this is great. This is like a great change to what we're doing. And there's a lot of information. However, the kindergarten meet and greet that was last night, we got the letter Monday, and it was just mailed on Saturday. So I'm actually lucky we got it Monday. Yes, there was a phone call as well. But it was mailed Saturday with notations from the, the staff, the teachers. That was made on August 1st. So there's like a two-and-a-half week delay before it's even mailed, getting information to parents about this thing that's happening the day before it's happening, if they even got it in the mail. And yes, like I said, there was a phone call reminder, but it's a reminder, a reminder only works if you already knew about it. Not, not an announcement within 24 hours of an event that's going on that's, again, for the most vulnerable of the incoming students. So I just, I want to point out that I think it's an extreme oversight. And I gotta say, I'm pretty pissed that this is what's happening. And I question the quality of education that's going to happen for those 26 students this year. And not by any fault of the one teacher that is going to have to deal with that. And man, she's got a hell of a job to do.
Superintendent?
I just would like to address some of the inaccuracies. Some of those kindergarten students, we have three sub-separate programs at each of our kindergarten. They have to be placed in an actual assigned class for power school, but they do not attend the actual kindergarten class all day. So we have monitored kindergarten numbers. I met with the school committee chair last Friday to discuss kindergarten numbers. And we are at 20 in both classes at Newton. We are at 21 at Discovery. And we are at 19 and 18 at Federal Street as of last Friday. So the numbers that you have reflected, we have monitored today again. But that is not just a kindergarten class. So they have kids that are assigned to that homeroom but do not attend that actual classroom all day. I really can't discuss further with, you know, without student confidentiality, but we have been monitoring those. Last night's event was a kindergarten playground night, which is just if families wanted to come play, see other kindergarten families. Our official meet and greet has been advertised heavily. It is Monday night, and another opportunity.
Thank you for answering that. I do want to remind councilors that the superintendent started July 1, I believe. It was not that long ago, so just keep that in mind, too. Do we have any other questions? Yes, Counselor Minhaas?
Hello, first off, welcome. I just had a question. There's a few things that I had just been hearing. One is, apparently, there was some extra money in the budget, and it was used to buy buses. Is that true?
I'll have to get that information for you.
Okay. Is there a shortage of buses? Do you know?
From TravelCuz or from our own fleet?
From your own fleet.
Well, we had two taken off the road by the DPW because they were inoperable.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
I'm really hoping, too, if there's specific, especially financial questions, that these could be put in as agenda items on the agenda for the superintendent in the future. Because it gets a little difficult for any one person to be able to remember one line in an entire budget. So I'm hoping, councilors, we've talked about the five-day rule and other procedures, and I would like to try to enforce that a little bit more, even though it's great to have these questions when they pop up, too. But that's something that could also come through Ways and Means. Other questions? I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now move to communications from the mayor, city officers, and employees.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to start first by introducing a couple of people and saying that help is making a comeback in City Hall. And I wanted to introduce my chief of staff, Erin Anhalt. And I'm also going to introduce Stella Chan. And I'm going to have her come up, just going to tell you a little bit about both of them, and then I'm going to let them say hi to you, okay? Stella began working in an interim capacity in June before becoming our full-time finance director in late July. And Stella's accumulated a lot of experience in financial support for several local area nonprofits and is doing a wonderful job with us. Erin, I wanted to introduce her as my new chief of staff. Keith Barnicle recently resigned to pursue new professional opportunities, and I want to thank him for his hard work and dedication, and wish him all the best in the future. But I'm going to have Stella come up so you can say hi to both of them, and then I have
Welcome.
Hello. How are you? Oh, hello. How are you? Okay, any questions? I don't know what, like, hello? Talk about yourself. Oh, okay. So as the mayor told you, I came to the city as an interim, and I understood that, you know, that the office had been vacant for a while. And so I, you know, I did the best I could. I felt like most of my time was really just learning and trying to be of help the best way I could, because I do come from, well, I've never worked in a municipality. I certainly participated as a citizen in various places I've lived, you know, in terms of arguing about my tax bill, you know, like that, wondering why my water bill was so high. So, but I never really saw the city from the inside, and this has been an incredible thing. At this time in my life, to have this opportunity professionally to learn about something totally new and challenging. I bring a lot of, as the mayor said, a lot of fiscal and accounting experience, mostly with working in the private sector and with many local nonprofits. So I feel like it's transferable, but there's a lot of things that really aren't transferable. So I feel like I have a good learning curve ahead of me, but I, with the support of the mayor, and I have to tell you, everybody in all the departments have been so helpful and so accommodating. They just, oh, Rachel, that's you! I looked over and I said, I'm not going to say anything. And I went, then I think, I remember her last name. Okay, well, Rachel can tell you about me, right? We didn't work that long together, did we? But I'm still around. Okay, I'm sorry. So everybody, including Kathy in the Clerk's Department, everybody's been so accommodating and understanding and helping me understand what is this thing called municipal government? What is this thing about Greenfield? And they're still very accommodating, even though now I'm, I mean, I didn't know if they knew how to relate to me as an interim, because they were like, oh, where are you? But the moment that I said, yeah, I'm going to come on board permanently, I really was part of the team. I have skin in the game now, and I'm just looking forward to learning. It's like I said, this stage of my life, to be taking on a challenge like this, and it's, it's, I don't know, it's exciting. I have great trust in the mayor, and I like her a lot, and that always helps when you like your boss, right? So that's kind of who I am, and Rachel can tell you more. Maybe in executive session next time or something. Anyway.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I am Erin Anhalt. I've sat here a few times to complain or offer my advice. I did not ever expect to be working at City Hall, but I'm really excited and really looking forward to working with all of you. And I feel a little bit like Leslie Knope from Parks and Rec right now, because I'm really excited about municipal government at the moment. Yay, government! That's what I got at the moment. Any questions?
Yes, Counsel Garrett?
This is for either of you or both of you, but you both seem really excited about government. Welcome. Appreciate you being on the team. And I'd be curious to know, what challenges are you looking forward to kind of tackling now that you're in these positions? Is there anything that you're looking forward to kind of sinking your teeth into or opportunities?
Well, I officially started yesterday, and I've had over 200 emails today. So can I get back to you? I'm not sure where to start with the answer.
Right. Well, I will tell you this. I feel like, which wasn't totally expected when I came on board just a few weeks ago, was really rebuilding my staff. I came, the moment I was sitting there onboarding with HR, the city accountant resigned. So that was a little alarming, because she was kind of in my head about how we were going to work together and so forth. And, you know, being as experienced and knowledgeable and great skills and so forth, and having that walk out the door was rather unnerving. So, but again, I felt like everybody throughout the different departments were very understanding that, you know, I was a newbie and I'm a rookie, and I didn't really know. They always would take a few steps backwards to explain what they were saying. I had the 200 emails, so I think I'm down to 100 now. But, and then we recently appointed Catherine to come over from the HR side and be a city accountant. But, you know, she also, too, had never been a city accountant, so we looked at each other and we thought, well, I'm a rookie, you're a rookie, but we both care deeply about being, making this successful and working together. And I'm finding that that actually can be a formula for success, to be learning together. You know, I thought we would probably try to, I don't know, we were going to try to poach at one time, another town or city accountant, but we couldn't figure out how we would do that, because that position is so rare to find. So now we have Catherine. The mayor was able to get us somebody who's going to be retiring as a town accountant, CPA, retiring student, has been willing to take some time to help us and come in and kind of bring in that little veteran that we sort of need. But I'm very hopeful for our department. We're both learning together, but I think in our learning and bringing our experience from the private sector, I think that can only be a good thing for the city. But like I said, I've been so appreciative of all the departments being for, you know, understanding and supportive and helping me and now Catherine with our learning and rebuilding my staff. And soon, we're going to have a procurement officer. I'm really excited about that, although one of our former procurement guys has come back to help, too. Again, a committed Greenfield citizen who wants to see the city be successful, and he came in and is now offering his skills to help us through this transition. So I think for me, it's staff building, so.
Thank you so much. Yes, Council Gordon.
Yeah, just quickly, I wanna say welcome to both of you. Very excited to see you both in these positions. And Stella, it's great to see you again. Stella and I worked together quite closely when I was co-executive director at Nellquit several years ago. And she says she's a rookie, but this is a woman who knows a ton about finance and accounting, and I certainly would have been lost without you then. And I'm excited that you're here in the city, and I know we're lucky to have you.
Thank you, Mayor.
They're absolutely fabulous, and I have to tell you a little bit about the people that have been helping just in this past week. Beth Deck getting payroll out for the first time. Beth Deck. And Janine came over. It was quite an adventure. Stella did a fabulous job, and I want to compliment all the people from different departments that volunteered. Vera from the school, Judy from the police department that were stepping up to give a hand wherever that was needed. And Phil Wartell is the person who was on procurement and has come back. He started on Monday, and he has years of experience with procurement, so that's very good. So, I just wanted to tell you, we had a fantastic triathlon that was the 40th anniversary. Christie Moore and Recreation did a wonderful job with that. And I felt like I was at the Olympics putting those medals on people. She had beautiful medals for the 40th, so that was terrific. You, I think it was, one of you had a question about Eversource, and I don't know if you had received a response about that, but you asked me last time about the outages there. And Evers, there were some lack of notification. We followed up with Eversource. We have a great relationship with Eversource. They were very responsive. They said that there was an issue that time with notification, and they have remedied that, and that won't happen again. But they partner very, very well with the city, and I just wanted to tell you that. And Main Street Water Restoration Plans, Marlo could not be here tonight, so I'm gonna replace him trying to explain what was happening, but he brought me a gift. I wanted to show you. This is show and tell. This is a 150-year-old brick that they found digging up the street that he brought in as a present for me, and I thought I'd have a little show and tell for my telling you about the Main Street Water Restoration Program. You've noticed what was happening on Main Street. That is, a lot of that that you've been seeing was the gas company. I am not sure when that is actually going to end, and Marlo did not know either, but that's what a lot of that has been. What we're doing is, started the day before yesterday, and the infrastructure is like 100, almost 105 years old. And we are replacing a four-inch water pipe with an eight-inch one. And he was explaining that everything underneath the street is 100 years old, and it's sort of like trying to thread a needle. The project is of great significance to the community and very important upgrade for our fire protection. The funding came from a $250,000 state earmark and also some retained earnings. He's hoping that it will be two months to complete, but it could be less than that. And it goes from Chapman to Colrain Street. I wanted also to tell you about the Board of Health, because I too read the newspaper article. And we actually appointed somebody last month to the Board of Health, and that person, I'm not sure if that individual has been sworn in yet. Dr. Romano and Carrie Mimmets both resigned, each one for different reasons. One moved out of town and the other person got a new job and just couldn't do that as a time commitment. So, we already have two new people who've handed in their letters of interest, and I think they may have already gotten down to the clerk's office, maybe not yet, but they didn't meet the five-day rule or they would have been on the agenda for this month. And that is, you'll read about them later, but Dr. Darius Greenback and Jody Stack. So, I'm glad that we will actually have a full Board of Health before we know it. Harvest Supper is taking place this Saturday from 4:00 to 7:00. This is one of Greenfield's best traditions. I'm just making a little push for that. They're still looking for volunteers, and I'll be out there pretending again that I made all of that food that you all know that I didn't do, because I hate cooking, and, but it is really a fun time to volunteer. And I'd see many of us on the school committee, I think, will be going to the convocation for the schools. That's gonna be next, I think it's next Monday, if I remember correctly. Yes? And I just wanted to thank all the students and staff at the Greenfield Public Schools that's been really working very, very hard preparing. I went down to visit the superintendent today, and I looked at her whiteboard and I said, "Boy, I'm really glad that's not mine." So, anyways, I'll take any questions.
Questions? Yes, Council Minhas?
This is not anything that you've discussed, but are there any updates from the Health Department about the Lunt cleanup? What is the progress on that?
So, we have, the city has made an agreement with OHI Engineering, and I can give you a better update on that next time. We partnered with them, and we just signed some kind of a little contract with them, and they've done a little bit of work, but I can't actually explain what it is. They're checking, I would say they were checking the results of what the LSP, that the person who did the remediation. And we will be following up with the, when there's the next PIP meeting. I think, I think Lyons Witten's is rewriting the PIP plan, and we're gonna be working alongside of him. But I know that we've already paid a couple of bills to Lyons Witten, so he is already doing some work for the city.
Council Mondelowski?
Good evening, Mayor. I wasn't able to make the GSET board meeting, but I saw the back and forth, and it seemed like you weren't getting information you needed around ARPA and other things. Has that been resolved?
We are meeting with John Lunt and Fern next week. Stella and I are going over. They have plans for the rollout to the North End and want us to do an IFB for that. And now that we have a procurement officer, that's gonna be a lot easier. It's pretty hard to do those things when you don't have a procurement person. I think the figure on that was probably about 90,000, but we'll be talking to them, I think it's next week. I still have a few questions, yes? And as any of you who know me, I always do have a lot of questions, but I do have some questions outstanding. And it looks like they're making some progress with the make-ready, which is expensive. But we've put money aside to hang that fiber that they have.
Thank you. Their, their plans are not very detailed. And I feel like I look at it, and there's like 16 pages of, "We think we're gonna do this, and we think we might do that." So, I definitely appreciate that you're doing more oversight.
Well, thank you. I will continue to be looking into that, but they're doing their best, and everybody who does have that service is thrilled with it. And I think it's, the up-speed and down-speed, or however it is that that goes, is really good, and it would be good if everybody, it was for everybody in the community, so I'm hoping that happens.
Council Bullock?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm wondering, and forgive me, I was not at the last meeting, I'm just back from two months of medical leave, but the, we have a vote coming up regarding the opioid funds, which is going, if it passes, it will revoke the dedication to the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund and bring it into a special revenue fund that allows for direct appropriation from you without a council vote. I'm just wondering, and it's, I read the DLS report, so I know that, like, you know, we may do this. We may place the funds in a special revenue fund, and we're allowed to revoke at any time through a council vote. I'm just wondering what the rationale behind that is, so that it can better inform my vote and maybe the other councilor's votes as well.
So, I'm gonna try to explain that as best as I can, and I can ask Stella to come up here too, if I don't explain this appropriately. The stabilization accounts, even the special purpose stabilization accounts, there has to be a first reading and a second reading. And remember again, you have to get that down to the clerk's office five days before the chair's meeting, which is actually right after this one ends, so practically. Which is, it's all a good plan, so everything gets checked out, but it does take quite a while to get a financial order to fruition. I didn't write the guidelines that came from the Department of Local Services, but I certainly can understand why they were done. The whole idea of that opioid stabilization, and you and I met about that, is to make sure that it gets into the hands of people who need, who need it. For those of you who don't know, we've already formed a committee, and you've had your first meeting. Anna Altman from the city is the city liaison to that. And Council Minhas and Council Bullock are on it. There are people from, I'm not on it, there's people from different social service agencies, somebody from the Recover Project, mom, who cares? There's a firefighter EMT that's on it, people that actually have firsthand experience. And the DLS guidelines were so that it would be more, you know, so that it could get into the hands of somebody. If there's an opioid, if it's an overdose death, I mean, you've seen those GoFundMe things, when somebody dies and it's tragic, and people looking for collection for something like that. The purpose of that revolving fund would be, I'm thinking it would be, you know, like, a meeting of the folks that are on that, so that the, you know, somebody would come to me for that, and I would be taking guidance from somebody else's to what that would be. If, I can understand that, because we have oversight on all of the funds that go from one place to another. But in this, I think the intention of the Department of Local Services was to be able to make that accessible when it was needed. But did I answer that enough? Because Stella and I have been researching about this, because we thought you might be having a question about it, some of you.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that answer. I think that, you know, when I thought about it this afternoon, because I was just catching up on a lot of emails, having, not having to go through committee chairs, getting on an agenda, having a financial order, making it to, making it to a city council for nine votes for an appropriation, makes a lot of sense. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we had some rationale before that came to the floor tonight, and I appreciate you explaining it. Thank you.
One last thing is, you as a committee can decide on the guidelines. That's why, you know, you put those, you'll meet and you can decide the parameters of what that should be. And I'm sure that you'll be making a great decision, which...
Yeah, the, the good thing is that we did have our first meeting. It was a great meeting, and the guidelines are very clear. The directives are very clear from the opioid abatement, like, technical guidance, so that's good. And I think that we'll have, like, a lot of recommendations to send to you once we get through this public engagement process, and we, we had a lot of great ideas from committee members. And I think I'll just put a plug out there that we are looking for a few more committee members. So if there is folks with lived experience with substance use and recovery, please do email myself or Council Minhas and the mayor, because we'd like to round out the committee with a few more members.
Any more questions for the mayor? Oh, yes, Council Golub.
I may have follow-up questions about this, and I'm just wondering, it seems more appropriate to, I appreciate the question, and I'd like to leave them for when it's on the agenda. Will one of you be here to answer those questions if they arise? Okay, great. Thank you.
Looks like that's it. Thank you, Mayor. There are no other communications from city employees. We'll move on to public comment. We will use our usual format, which is three minutes. Please state your name and address, and we'll start with Jesus Leyva.
Hello? Jesus Leyva, 88 Deerfield Street, Greenfield. I actually sent my comments to everybody via email. I'm hoping you might actually take the time to read the comment and the linked petition attached. It's a very small, simple change.org online petition, specific to Greenfield. "My hope not only that you might sign it, but that you might actually share it with your constituents and also potentially share it on social media. My hope is to have at least 100 signatures on the petition before submitting it to the Greenfield School Committee to request their endorsement by resolution for the proposal. If they endorse it, we have reliable partners in other nearby communities willing to join us in the effort. We've reached out and contacted cities outside of our region too, but everybody is looking around for a sign that this can have a critical mass of support before they themselves support it. If everyone's strategy for state school funding advocacy is wait and see, then we don't move forward. At the March 1 state budget hearing, it was repeatedly stated by education officials that 211 out of 318 public school districts in the Commonwealth are minimum aid communities. The funding increase they receive from the state does not even cover inflation. Most low and moderate income cities and towns statewide are experiencing the same anxiety around their school budgets and the tension of having to choose between that and running other essential city services. Many more than just 211 districts are declining enrollment communities with similar school funding struggles, including our own. And it's not limited to Western Mass, and it's not limited to small communities. Boston in this year is a minimum aid community in declining enrollment too. For us to have a chance at affecting the state budget process, we need to be unified behind one proposal, and we need to speak with one voice. For years, many towns and cities have lamented the negative funding impact of having cities pay for charter schools and school choice from their Chapter 78 rather than having the state underwrite that cost. Please consider signing this petition and sharing it with your constituency. If we can demonstrate a high level of support for this funding proposal in Greenfield, it makes it easier to reach out to other communities." And seriously, if you, Council Toranzo, and other councilors are in direct contact with people in school communities in other municipalities, I would love to be connected with those people and try to reach out. We really need the help in trying to reach other places that are, they know this stuff, but they don't know that other people are looking at it and working on it and actually trying to push for a specific advocacy effort. So, I would really appreciate any help on that front too. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Goodwin?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street. As always, I thank you for all your hard work. I'm here to express a concern that I have regarding the community involvement with the immigrants. I attended a hearing, and I look forward to working more with Wendy, and I'm in touch with Lori from the Center for New Ci, I think it's New Citizens. Anyway, there's an issue that I know some of you know about, and I'm gonna pursue that, because I have a gentleman that lives in my building who wants to speak French and Creole and get involved, and he's been denied access at this point in time. I think you, some of you know, and I'm very glad that Senator Joe Comerford is involved. And I've been told that ICE on it, that situation can maybe help improve. To me, I think it's an urgent situation that those people are in need, and I do feel that we'd like to help them as much as we can, and there seems to be an issue. I wanna congratulate the mayor on... I want to congratulate the mayor on quickly being able to fill positions. I know that in the past, people have said, nobody wants to step up, nobody wants to serve. I see that she's filling lots of positions from time to time, in my opinion, pretty quickly. So, I don't think these people are falling off the trees, I think she has to shake the trees in the community and do some research, and involve meeting with people, talking to, you know, human resource at times and so forth. So I think that's not an easy thing to do, and I want to congratulate her. I also want to say that the Board of Health has been very helpful recently, again in the Weldon, and there may be a little turnover going on. I look forward to speaking with the director, but I do very well speaking with Inspector Jess and also with Inspector Nicole, should there be a need. I want to say that I volunteered at Soul Fest recently, up at the fairgrounds, for all of the days. Everybody had a great time. I don't know so much about some of the neighbors, that might have said the music's a little too loud. I heard about that. It was even loud when I was there on Saturday night, and sitting in the grandstand. So, I love the fact that we're using our grandstand because I think it brings revenue into the town. I will also be helping with Amy Dolivan for the Franklin County Fair, as I have done for the last six years, volunteering with the recycling up there. I think whatever we can do to bring money into the town, to build up our treasure, is much needed. I have met Stella just on the fly, and I think she's on fire for what she needs to do, and I'm very impressed with that. I can't think of anything else other than, I know that this is hard for you, and I honor that you do spend all your time on this. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Joey Nibala? Welcome.
Joey Nibala, 45 Congress Street, Greenfield. Today, I come to you guys as a concerned citizen. I know you guys, I know just recently, we've made steps to remove the seats downtown in Greenfield. The reason I'm concerned, I don't think that's the fix. I was down there getting Mesa Verde two weeks ago, I brought this concern up to someone on board here, and as I was coming out, I saw someone defecating in the road, right there. There's been ongoing issues down there too, seen it all over Facebook, but another alarming thing that just occurred over this past weekend, I'm driving downtown, leaving Magpie, and just someone I haven't seen around town, it's just a lot, like, part of the crew that's always hanging out down there, just in the middle of the street, tries to cut off my car, gets in the middle of the road, I have to slam on my brakes, and then almost takes a, almost opens the door to my car, the driver's side of my car. So, I know there's some things in place right now, but my question is, is there anything we could do as a town to set ordinances? I know Greenfield PD is doing all they can, I know they're doing an excellent job, they've had officer presence down there, and that's been huge, so I want to thank Greenfield PD for that. But what can we do as a town that could make this better and make it a safer community? Because right now, we're starting to see people in this community that didn't grow up here. A lot of them are coming from, you know, we have a lot of nonprofits, but what are these nonprofits doing? Are we doing, like, outreach? Because a lot of these people are just sitting out there doing nothing every day. Is there any way we could collaborate as a town with some of these nonprofits? I think that would be beneficial to this town. So, that was my concerns I wanted to bring to you guys. I want to thank you for your time, I thank you for your work, so, that, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like that is it for public comment. We'll move on to the public hearing and second reading on page 17, I believe that is. Is that Councilor Toronzo?
Public hearing, right. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 21, 2024, at 6:30 PM at John Zong Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street in Zoom. To receive public input on the following, to revoke the revenue dedication of Massachusetts State Subdivision for statewide opioid settlement funds to the Special Purpose Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund, city council may consider the same on Wednesday, August 21, 2024, at 6:30 PM at John Zong Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street in Zoom. Materialos can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone... Just read the phone. Okay. 413-772-1555, extension 6163. John Bottomly, City, Greenfield City Council President.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing at 8:26 PM. No one signed up for a public comment on this. Anyone in the audience, I'll just put it out there, want to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll get the second reading.
Revoke the revenue dedication of Massachusetts State Subdivision and four statewide opioid settlement funds to the Special Purpose Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund.
We are waiting for this to be one minute. I'll close this public hearing at 8:27. I'm thinking this actually, given the time, might be a good time to take a five-minute break before we go on to motions and resolutions, so a five-minute break, everyone, and we'll be back. All right, everybody, we are back from our brief recess. We will go to motions, orders, and resolutions, number two, the city election warrant. What page is that? 19. Could I have someone read that?
Sure. The city council moved that it be ordered, hereby approves further attached state primary election warrant from September 3 to 2024, and further authorizes the city council president to sign said warrant on behalf of the city council. Majority vote required.
You need to read page 20 also.
Page 20. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was, I'm so... Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Francis Calvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, warrant for the 2024 state primary, Franklin SS, to the constables of the city of Greenfield, greetings in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precincts 1 through 9, Greenfield High School Ginazium, 21 Bar Avenue, on Tuesday, the third day of September 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates' political parties for the following officers. Do I need to go through all that too? Yeah, okay. Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, 2nd District, Counselor, 8th District, Senator and General Court, Hampshire, Franklin, and Worcester District, Representative in General Court, 1 Franklin, Precinct 5 to 8, and 2 Franklin District, Precincts 1 through 4 and 9, Clerk of Courts, Franklin County, Register of Deeds, Franklin District. Hereof, hear of, fail not, and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the place and time and place of said voting, given under our hands this 21st day of August 2024. John Bottomly, City Council President. A true copy, attest. Kathy Scott, Greenfield City Clerk. Oh, it keeps going. Warrant must be posted April 27, 2024, at least seven days prior to the September 3, 2024 state primary. I am sorry for reading that.
Excellent, I need a second on that. Open up for discussion, this is obviously pretty necessary. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilor Gullub?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilor Minhas?
Yes.
Councilor Toronzo?
Yep.
Councilor Bottom, President Bottomly, would you wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to the proclamation, Councilor Perry.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached proclamation entitled Declaration to deem the month of September 2024 as Stephen King Month, and authorize the city council president to sign the resolution on behalf of the city council. A proclamation to declare the month of September 2024 Stephen King Month, whereas Stephen King is a native New Englander who has been the undisputed king of horror since his 1974 release of Carrie, and whereas Stephen King's fiction and nonfiction has been taught in Greenfield High School English classes for over 30 years, and whereas Stephen King has been dedicated to improving the New England regional economy, including filming Castle Rock in Frank County, and whereas the Massachusetts Cultural Council, together with Cohen and Company Real Estate and Development Associates, have come together to sponsor a Stephen King Film Festival at the Historic Gardens Cinemas in the heart of Greenfield's Downtown Cultural District, and whereas the Stephen King Film Festival return will run for five weeks from August 30 through September 4, and feature 25 different Stephen King films, including the only film directed by Stephen King, Maximum Overdrive, and whereas the Greenfield Cinema planned this festival for September is a traditionally slower economic period for local businesses, and whereas an independent 2021 Ernest and Young Study commissioned by the National Association of Theater Owners shows that retailers near movie theaters see a 50% increase in revenue the hour before and after a movie, and whereas the governor, the Garden Cinema, has partnered with the Franklin County Chamber of Commerce Tourism Program to use this event to draw in tourism for this event from over 50 miles away, and whereas the Garden Cinema has worked with and through the Greenfield Business Association to invite all local businesses to participate in this festival to maximize the local economic impact, and whereas the horror genre of the Stephen King Film Festival is the perfect lead in to a copolia of Halloween activities across the city in October. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Greenfield, do hereby declare and proclaim that month of September 2024 to be deemed Stephen King Month, and do hereby encourage all people who dare to be scared to fully participate in all the offerings at the Stephen King Film Festival and ancillary events. John Bottomly, President, Greenfield City Council. Before we discuss...
Ooh, I need a second first.
Before we discuss, there is one small amendment on the fourth, whereas the Massachusetts Cultural Council, together with Cohen and Company Real Estate and Development Associates at the Greenfield Corporate Center, is the addition. The clerk already has it.
So that's a motion, I'll need a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
This is a motion to include that language in the resolution.
Point of question?
Yes.
If there were to be another slight addendum to this, could we do it as one? When it comes to verbiage?
So there is a amendment on the floor. You should vote this amendment and then create another one with the language wherever it should be. On the proposed amendment, Councilor Gullub?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilor Minhas?
Yes.
Councilor Toronzo?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The amendment passes unanimously.
Councilor Toronzo, did you have another amendment?
Well, we saw there might be a typo on the next line. Whereas the Stephen King Film Festival will run for five weeks from August 30 through September 4, actually should read October 4, I apologize for not catching that. Yeah, it was a four, it was a four-day festival.
So that's another amendment. We'll need a second.
So we need a second for that amendment?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilor Gullub?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilor Minhas? Councilor Toronzo?
Yep.
Count, President Bottomly, do you wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The second amendment passes unanimously.
Back to you, Councilor Perry.
Before the pandemic hit, the gardener owner was trying to set up a board of people to get together to talk about how the community could support the theater, and what we could do to generate interest and get films in, but then the pandemic hit, and that all kind of fell apart. But the Garden Theater is one of, one businesses who hung in there and made it through the pandemic, and has been great for the downtown business area. And so, when somebody came up with this idea for Stephen King, it seemed like a good thing to do, to help promote business downtown, to promote the historic theater. We know that a lot of work is being done in the facade of that theater, and, you know, the history of theater is very important to the history of Greenfield, so this is a good thing for Greenfield.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote?
On the resolution as amended, Councilor Gullub?
Yes.
Councilor Gordon?
Yes.
Councilor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Councilor Healy?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilor Minhas?
Yes.
Councilor Toronzo?
Yep.
Councilor, President Bottomly, would you like to vote?
And yes.
The motion passes unanimously. It's hard to get...
Moving on to the revocation, that would be Councilor Toronzo.
Order number 25, FY 25003, the city council upon recommendation of the mayor, in order to revoke opioid settlement dedication and stabilization fund, moved that it be ordered that the city revoke the revenue dedication of Massachusetts State Subdivision for statewide opioid settlements funds to the Special Purpose Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund established under MGL Chapter 40, Section 5B, Local Option Paragraph. This is in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53, Clause 4, which now allows for establishment of a special revenue fund, which allows funds to be expended without further appropriation, two-thirds vote required.
I need a second on that?
Second.
Report from committee.
This is unanimously positive.
And discussion on this? Seeing, oh, yes, Council Gordon, or Council Gullub. Gullub then Gordon.
I have a few questions. The first is to be clear on what we're voting on. Am I understanding this correctly, that currently we have a stabilization fund, which would require the multiple steps, the first reading, the second reading that the mayor discussed, and it would also require two-thirds majority vote? That's what is currently set in place for these funds, and the proposal would shift this to a, to a special purpose revenue fund, which would allow the mayor to decide to allocate the funds without having to go through that process. Is that accurate? Okay.
I think, and the only thing I just wanted to clarify, did, didn't stabilizations get moved down to simple majority, not two-thirds, not that long ago?
Not that long ago?
I believe so. I think most of those are now down to just majority vote.
Okay. And a couple of question, more questions. So how many years do we anticipate that these funds will be coming to us for?
Fifteen.
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 Okay. So, yeah, I, I still feel a little bit split on this because I think that I'm hearing that the stable, with the stabilization fund, the benefit is that there's greater oversight from council. I, I do really trust the pro, I, I trust what I'm hearing. I'm excited about what I'm hearing, what Counselor Bullock shared. I, uh, I trust the current mayor on this, but I wonder what would prevent fu, future mayors from not listening to the advocacy from the community. And I'm, I'm concerned that if we change it to a fund that the mayor just has oversight over, then we could run into a problem where we didn't have a mayor who was really listening to the advocacy from the community. And I'm wondering what, how that's being addressed.
I also had those same concerns when I originally was reading this. I think the, uh, the caveat here is that these are still funds that have direct purpose, uh, parameters, that regardless of whether we have it in a stabilization or it's in a non-stabilization fund where the, it would be a mayoral discretion, they still have to be used for very specific uses. They can't just all of a sudden be used for something totally different. I, I also, while I share those concerns, I think what was said earlier about the expediency of the need of some of these funds kind of takes, for me, it takes, uh, takes a bigger weight than, uh, than the direct oversight of all the funds. And I think it, at, at a certain point, while I, I appreciate having some oversight in the city funding on the financial aspect, I, in this case especially, I think it would just drag out a process that I don't think any of us are really equipped for anymore. And I don't think we're going to necessarily get more information in a timely manner for funds that would be needed in a more timely manner, uh, or an appropriate time manner, uh, than if, you know, we have trust in having some sort of commission or a board that's advi, like an advisory board as we have right now uh, to the, to the executive. And I think if we stand fast on keeping some sort of advisory board like that, that would be a intermediary form of oversight that wouldn't have to go through all of those channels when it has to come through us for moving out of a stabilization fund.
I'd like to just jump to Counselor Bullock to go out of order, just because I think she may be able to answer this, being on the fund committee. And I'm not sure the length of that committee, the term of it, but I'm wondering if you might be able to answer some of these questions, since the committee has already met several times.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has, um, about the committee. This, you know, this has been something that I have been long, you know, through the tenure of my, of my life as a counselor. I've been following from the beginning and, um, I have been concerned about the oversight and the transparency and the level of public engagement. And, you know, since January, we have had, um, a very cooperative process with, with the mayor and the executive office and Anna Altman from, from that office. And so the committee has met, um, I've met with, I've met with Anna a handful of times. The committee has met once formally. Uh, we have another meeting scheduled for the twenty-seventh of this month. We've outlined a sort of tentative timeline for a public engagement process. You know, Counselor Toronzo, what you said about, um, about the, like, the, you know, that someone couldn't just, like, pick and choose what they're going to spend this on, like, it's true and it's not true. So, you know, I've gone to a number of trainings and conferences on opioid abatement funds and spending. The parameters are specific but broad, um, and they leave a lot of discretion, um, up to people. And so, you know, some municipalities have decided, um, you know, all of these funds are going directly to our county jail, or all of these funds are going, uh, directly to the police department, or we're only going to use them for one specific thing. And not to say that there's, those things are good and bad. Those are what those municipalities have decided. But I do, I have, I have questions and concerns about a changeover of power within the executive office and what that would mean, especially since we're not like, we're not a formal body. Um, we're not a formal, we're an advisory board that, that where we haven't been formally appointed by the mayor. Um, we're really creating this plane as we're flying it and trying to rectify some of the problems that other communities have bumped into um, that we've been able to hear about, um, because of some of these, the technical assistance that's been provided by the state and, and federal guidance. And so, you know, this one I'm really torn on. I wish, um, as the person who I think has followed this the closest and the longest on the council, I wish I could give you an affirmative. On the one hand, like, I trust Ginny, um, and we've had a close, good working relationship. And I've now been on council long enough to know that things change. Uh, and that doesn't always, things, you know, priorities change, things change. And so we could get, um, another, another mayor in office who says, you know, well, I want all these funds to go to this nonprofit because I like them and I used to work there or something. And I, that's not the intention of this money. Um, the intention is that the public really gets to decide how this money is dispersed to best remedy, um, and remediate some of the pain and suffering that our communities felt. So I actually, um, have now, I think, convinced myself that I, I think we should keep this in a stabilization fund and there should be a public hearing that's brought before, before city council. I think we, we should have to receive a financial order. Either way, the mayor has really the executive power. She gets to put a financial order in front of us. If there's something so dire that it needs to happen immediately, um, we can call a special meeting, right? We, that's what we always say. So, you know, I, I think I am going to vote no on this and I'm, I'm open to changing my mind. But for the long haul, for like the next fifteen years and the over a million dollars that we're going to receive through this process, I feel really strongly that the public has as much transparency. And I think that being on our agenda as little as that means to whoever reads our agendas ahead of time, and allowing for a built-in public comment process, if there is an appropriation that the public doesn't agree with, um, being, being built into the process is important.
Let's see, I have a long list. I guess, um, Counselor Gordon.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm still wrapping my head around all of this and, and catching up on the opioid stabilization stuff. So please forgive any ignorance I betray here, but, um, I, thank you, Counselor Bullock, for the, um, for, for that explanation. It's really helpful. Uh, because it's, it sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it sounds like the idea here is to give the mayor the flexibility to use funds without him going to come to council, but within the parameters established by the committee, but that the committee hasn't actually established any of those parameters yet. Is that correct?
So there is parameters that are established by the, like, through the process. Like, in order for us to spend these funds, they have to be used on prevention, harm reduction. There's, you know, there's a list of parameters that are very broad. And there's some that they say, we especially like these things, so definitely, you know, try to fund these things. But there, there's very broad parameters. What the committee is doing is trying to outline a process for public engagement and public input. And that means we're going to say, in order to appropriate money from the opioid stabilization fund or whatever, whatever it ends up being, we are going to engage in X, Y, and Z from the city. That's, we've talked about doing a, um, Counselor Minhaus and I have talked about doing like a people's hearing instead of a public hearing, um, doing a couple of community, um, conversations that, you know, we had a brainstorm with our, with our committee a couple of weeks ago, and there was many ideas, and now we're just sort of trying to filter them into what our process will look like. But, yeah, so I think DLS's intention was make it possible and easy to appropriate that, this money quickly. And there's no set process for what public engagement has to look like. And our committee is really committed to making it a robust process. And like, we have a lot of years that, that means like, the committee ha, like, a committee, not the same people, has to remain engaged for many years, which we know there's turnover in boards and commissions and committees and historical knowledge gets lost. So, yeah, I, sorry, I hope I answered your question. I'm a little crashing.
That's really helpful. Um, yeah, and we really appreciate you being here. And so, yeah, then future committees would have to also decide to, on what their community engagement would look like, right? Like, that will be an ongoing thing as well?
Yeah, I think we hoped we would outline a process and then, like, the committee could use that process for many years, but the committee would be the people who are like on the ground engaging the public because the city doesn't really have, like, a position that would do this. And so we sort of need our volunteer government to step up and say, uh, he, we're going to hold this and we're going to do it this way. And so the committee would outline a process that then could be followed over the years for public engagement and shifted as needed based on what's going on in the community. But that that process is set up in there in present, so people know what to do over the next fifteen years.
Thank you. Uh, and I'm sorry, I have one last question. If, if we approve this, sorry, now, then does that, um, just, is that how it, like, the mayor, for the neck, whoever is mayor ten years from now, still has that fund and, and the flexibility to use it however they want? And it, or is there a way that the council, you know, if the council, a future council was unhappy with, you know, how that process was proceeding, would there be a way to, to change it back? And it's sort of a process question, which is why I'm looking at you, Clark.
I, well, in terms of DLS, I believe, once we appropriate money, that changes where, how we can move it. I'd have to reread that DLS article. But I think one, like, the only reason I think we can do this is because we haven't appropriated any money yet. Um, so we initially got a one, a payment of like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we got another hundred and fifty. So we have like four hundred grand right now to appropriate, but we haven't spent a penny. I think once we do spend money, it changes a little bit.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I, I really appreciate the idea here. And, uh, Mayor, I think that I really have respected the way that you're approaching this and the committee is approaching this. Uh, but I do share those concerns about how this would play out over however many years we're getting this funding. Um, I also kind of last minute today spoke with a couple of people in the community who work very closely with folks affected by opioids, um, including someone who I would say is, is one of the experts in our community on this, who said to me that, that the priority for them is really having true community involvement and that taking a little extra time for the approval process is preferable to running the risk that, you know, future mayors, future committees, you know, whoever they might be, might go for expediency over real community involvement. Um, and that was persuasive to me. So, yeah, I, I think I would have a hard time voting yes on this as it stands right now. I think, you know, as we see the commu, the committee develop its guidelines and what their process is, I would, you know, be willing to entertain more discussion of this. But right now, I feel like, at least for me, I don't know enough to feel confident that, um, you know, this would go well over the entire fifteen years that we're getting these funds.
I'm go, I think we should go through the list of people, uh, that would like to speak first and then I'll, then I'll come, return to people. Uh, next I have, uh, Counselor Master Tataro. Oh, okay. Counselor Minhaus?
So I'm on this advisory board, uh, just as a clarification. The advisory board doesn't have any power. Like Ginny is nice right now, but Ginny's not going to be the mayor for fifteen years. We have to legislate and think about the long run and legislate in principle, not based on who is in what position. So think about in ten years, if we have someone we don't really like, and now you're just giving them full and complete control over these funds. Do we want that? Probably not. We'd like to have some more oversight and give more power and key power, not give more key power of oversight of these funds at the city council level. Additionally, as somebody who's dealt with a lot of the social services here in this city, and the way that those funds are spent, a lot of the times it's just, oh, okay, we have an agency that's already working. Most of the people dispensing those funds don't actually work on the ground with those people that are affected by that. And they see, oh my God, a homeless person, oh, they're going crazy. Oh, they're, you know, they have some drug issues. I don't deal with them day to day. This agency does. Let me just hand over these funds. That's usually what happens. And we just saw someone at Public Comment today describe the abysmal situation of our community in that respect. That's something I would like to not happen. I'm very critical of the social services that are offered in the city. As you might know from my many rants on them, um, they are very well-funded. And the concern is that, yes, Ginny might not just hand over funds to somebody who's a friend on a certain social service agency. But ten years from now, we can't guarantee that. And now we're just handing over that power to the next mayor. After ten years or fifteen years to do that, I think that's appalling. So I will vote no.
Counselor Healy?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Counselor Bullock and Counselor Minhaus for their hard work on this. This is something I hold true and do to my heart. I think there was a lot of great points here, and I, I do agree with the concern of not having the committee that we've put together have oversight of this funding. I think, I think if we keep it in the stabilization fund, um, it empowers that committee a little bit and it gives them the ability to make a recommendation to the council once these, um, funds are presented to us from the mayor. And we could look to that committee to say, do you agree with how these funds are being spent? And if it's got a positive recommendation from that committee, then we can make a good judgment of that and listen to the public, because public involvement in this is, is very important. The victims and the families, um, their voice really matters here. So, you know, it's, it's tough. It's tough to move this, but thinking outside the box a little bit, does all that, this revenue have to be in one fund? Can we create, um, a small, um, special revenue fund where we put a small amount of that money, maybe twenty thousand dollars, and say, hey, this is for those emergency situations where we have to get it done quickly? And in good faith, it's a small amount of money compared to the four hundred thousand. And then we do have like an emergency reserve to say, yeah, let's do this with this real quick. And the mayor doesn't need our, um, approval for that. Just something to think about, because I think, you know, even with a special meeting, it still takes time. And if there is something that needs to happen quickly, at least we have an avenue to do so. Thank you.
Counselor Toronzo?
Uh, just, I mean, kind of a couple of things. One was, um, kind of on the, the the brass tacks of some of these things is, there's nothing in the settlement that says there's public involvement. And I'm not saying there shouldn't be public involvement. Trust me. Don't mince, change my words around. I also, while I understand the skepticism, I think we have to get away from fear mongering on a lot of these things because I could also go on to- also go on to be devil's advocate to say, I have a skepticism of, I've, I've lived here my entire life, pretty much. There's been a lot of different city councils that have done a lot of crazy stuff. Half the reason I wanted to join was to stop some of the crazy that I was seeing. Um, so I have just as much skepticism of our future executive as maybe of future councillors, to be fair. Um, because we never know who those are gonna be, or how the tides are gonna turn. Um, my only concern with setting up these kind of funds is over invol, like, while I want the participation, um, and I understand councillor Healy's point that, as well, that it does give this advisory board, if we have one, a little bit, seemingly more teeth into how it's gonna be spent. I also see that there would be possibly thirteen people with difference of opinions as we have, um, maybe having stalemate, uh, votes. A lot of the time where these, these funds, and it doesn't have to be just for this specific thing, but this is more of like, in general, when we have these types of additional monies that are outside of what we're normally used to dealing with, whether it's ARPA, whether it's this, um, where it can, it can stall a, a lot. It becomes this huge imposition of our own red tape in the way of getting things done. And, and yes, while I understand there are gray areas in the sense of how they can be spent, because they're, they're more used in broad terms, and people have different opinions on how, whether or not this social service agency is doing their, their thing, you know, these nonprofits are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Like, we also don't ha, well, we don't really have a social service, a real, actual social service, because we don't have a government-funded, really government-funded and government-run solution to a lot of these problems. We rely a lot on the nonprofits, because we don't have these abilities. We're not, you know, that, we're just not set up that way. Um, and, I don't know, I just, I, I caution against, like, while I understand the advisory, and, 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 uh, I just wanna also caution against, from the other way, that, um, sometimes you have too many, too many hands, too many cooks in the kitchen, and that can really delay a process and not actually become effective at all. That's just my concern with, with something like this, but.
I'll go to councillor Wondolowski.
Can I, sorry, can I, point of order, can I just clarify some misinformation real quick before
Sure.
we continue the discussion? So councillor Torrendo said that there is nowhere that it's required for there to be a public engagement process. And I just wanna be very, very clear that the guidance for municipalities utilizing opioid settlement abatement funds, the very first bullet point in the state subdivision agreement that we agree to when we receive these funds, says that municipalities need to develop and expend and incorporate community input from those directly affected by the opioid epidemic. It goes on, um, as you get more deeply into the requirements, there's reporting requirements from municipalities for these funds, starting in August of last year, um, that if we expend, or if we receive over thirty-five thousand dollars, we're required to submit a report. The first part of that report, and the first bullet point of that report, is that we need to report specifically on our efforts to solicit community input regarding how abatement funds should be spent from local stakeholder, stakeholders, including people with lived experience of the opioid epidemic. And it goes on in that reporting form to offer strategies on how public engagement can happen, and which communities specifically should be targeted. So, I just wanna be like, extremely explicit that public engagement is at the forefront of how these funds should be spent. There is no question about that. I have been on hours of webinars and days of conferences about how public engagement is and isn't happening across the country for these funds and for this settlement. And it is explicit that that is required for us to spend this money. And that is actually why I got involved in this from the very beginning with the last administration, was to make sure that public engagement was deep, um, and, and meaningful, and impactful in our community. And so, I just wanna be very clear that that is required of us to, because we have received more than thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, it, it's not, it's not a question of if, um, it's a must, or, or we need to give this money back.
Can, can I respond to that as I was called out, directly?
Yes, yes.
My, my point is not that there's, there's not the need for it or to do it. There's, as you were saying, as the layout of how the funds can be expended, and there are like, five ways that they can be expended, or whatever, those are broad, so are the terms of public engagement. And someone's personal feelings about how that public engagement happens is not part of the requirement of the settlement. It requires that there is an effort to be made. It does not lay out what that effort is, and what parameters that has to adhere to either. That's my point, is you could say that you're just gonna hold one public hearing, or one public meeting on it, and that could be your attempt at engagement with the public. You could have fifteen of those things. It all depends on how it wants to be structured. And so, it's, those terms are also very broad, but they're not, there's no requirement in any of these settlements that structures exactly how public engagement is supposed to be involved. Public engagement could be, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have a town hall. I'm gonna have an open door policy as the executive, and let people come in and share their things. All of those things are possibilities. That's what I'm trying to get at, is, is having such a rigid structure on one end, and being skeptical of their, when it's broad, and not having, uh, any kind of faith in the structure that's already developed for the use of these funds, i- it ends up becoming splitting hairs. That's all I was saying. I don't
So, yeah, I just wanna
Doesn't really bother me either way.
I just wanna, I just wanna be very clear that although the, the hard and fast guidance does not explicitly lay out an engagement process, the, the technical assistance and guidance is there on what is best practices. And so, we can say, sure, we can do whatever we want, and many communities have, and people have come together and said, this wasn't good, like, they just did a survey, and that wasn't impactful or meaningful, and the money didn't go where it needed to go. There is now, because nationwide, these are, this, these funds are being rolled out, there is now guidance on how to best do this, around, with, with technical assistance providers that are being, that are supporting states. And that is what this committee is a part of. And so, I just want us to be careful that, like, there's people who are deeply involved in this work on the day-to-day, and spending many hours trying to make this be really a meaningful process for Greenfield, and our, and, and well-spent funds, um, including the mayor's office, you know, like, Anna's, Anna Altman has dedicated hours of this, um, of her time. Um, I don't think this was originally a part of her job, um, to do this. And so, there is guidance around this. I just don't want it to seem like we're just like, making this up completely. We are trying to do this in a timely fashion, in a timeline to get money out on the ground, because it's, we, we need it. Um, and we are also following the sort of highest and best practices out there, uh, closely in how to do this, because public engagement is required.
Uh, I'm gonna s, go to a few councillors, uh, that haven't had a chance to speak on this yet. But I also wanna say, so, isn't this fund like a guideline from the state? Like, didn't, so, I mean, that is a guideline, that the state recommended this fund, that we put that in there. So I wanna just throw that out, that that's also a guideline. Um, but I'd like to go to councillor
Sorry.
Wondolowski, then Garrett and Perry.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate this conversation, and it's made me more, uh, on the fence than I was coming in here. Um, I, I really appreciate the comments of councillor Healy, and, and, and thinking about creative solutions, because I'm guessing the answer to, like, if we moved it into, i- if we went forward with the motion, we couldn't put any guardrails or suggestions around how that could be used by the mayor, is my guess, is, is a no. Um, I will say, I work for a foundation that has a rapid response fund, and I've seen how being able to move money quickly to emergency situations really makes a difference for people and organizations on the ground. And so many places out there don't have that ability to move money quickly. And, and so, I, I, I appreciate, um, the idea of maybe splitting this, so that we could have money that's available quickly, while understanding that we wanna make sure that we're not just, you know, that we're looking into the future as well. So that would be my suggestion.
Councillor Garrett, then Perry.
Um, the first thing I just wanted to address, and thank you for letting me speak, is the, um, idea councillor Healy had, which I also really like, but I'm looking unfortunately at the guidance here from the DLS, Department of Local Services. And it mentions that if you revoke the stabilization fund, all statewide opioid settlements previously received may, may be placed in the special revenue fund. And so, I'm guessing that means basically it just flips it over, like a switch. Although, the word may, you know, maybe can be place, you know, it's like, I don't know if it's a on-off switch, but I'm reading that as it's one or the other, unfortunately. Um, another detail I noticed in the guidance here is, as far as if we did decide to vote yes on this and create this special revenue fund, it mentions that there is a requirement for the approval of the director of accounts, which I believe is our finance director, if I, you know, assume. So there is a check in that regard. Um, all that being said, I think it's clear that everybody on the committee, you know, or at least, I assume, wants the community to be involved, the people to be infected, involved. And the other thing I'm wondering is, can we give that advisory committee teeth? You know, can we give it, you know, a legislative basically backing to make it have power over these next fifteen years? Because, you know, I trust the members of the community, and those that are experts in this, to do the work, and the councillors have put the work in. Can we give them the authority to basically have the peace of mind that committee is gonna be able to do this work? And so, I don't know if we're gonna be able to find the answer for that right today, but that's definitely something that I would love to consider if we have that option, to kind of create that checks and balances. Councillor Bullock's point, and everyone else is about not wanting to, you know, trust in the future blindly is, is wise. But, you know, in any case, that's just really kind of where my thinking is going on it.
Uh, councillor Perry?
I just had a question for either the mayor or councillor Bullock. What role, if any, does the opioid task force have in this? Do they have any input? Have they been involved in the process at all? Do you know?
Yeah, they were, so they were brought into initial meetings with, um, with the prior administration. Um, there was a few meetings that were held with local service providers. Um, they were brought in there. Um, there is like, some mem, some folks who are members of the opioid task force, different committees who are a part of this committee. But there's been, um, through the survey, and through, you know, sort of on-the-ground conversations, um, there was a desire to have this be separate from the opioid task force, um, and have this be a sort of more direct, um, direct link to the, to the community in a different way than the opioid task force is. Um, so, that's sort of, yeah, that's sort of where it is. And the only other thing I wanna say is, um, you know, a lot of what we're talking about, I think I'm getting frustrated, because like, there's a lot of process that's got in, gone into putting this committee together, and, um, you know, agendas and notes and planning, and, um, so, like, this idea to have a fund, like, it was, you know, it was discussed in our last brainstorming meeting, that, um, you know, maybe we would pull out X amount of dollars, and have it be a rapid response-type fund for families that are needing burial funds, or emergency funds for X, Y, and Z, and have that, like, held at the mayor's office, so the mayor had money that she could rapidly use. Um, and it would be appropriated that way. Um, so we would appropriate whatever, fifty thousand dollars a year that way, or something. Um, the, the specifics hadn't been worked out, but there is a process in process of, you know, procedures in process for, uh, for this, and I, I feel we're a bit discussing that, and a bit discussing moving the money out of the stabilization fund. Um, and as councillor Garrett is correct, that there, there's discretion here. So, this wasn't guidance from DLS saying, do this, move this money this way. There was many different options in this guidance, saying you may do X, Y, and Z, based on what your municipality wants to do. And that's like, what we're tasked with right now. It's like, what does our municipality wanna do? Do we want to c, remain in control as a council of, when a, when the mayor brings us a financial order, we appro, we agree to appropriate the funds? Or do we wanna say, we hand over appropriation? And I just wanna bring up, like, you know, people are mad about how ARPA funds are spent. ARPA is something that doesn't have to come through us. Um, so it's, I, I think it's just something for us to think about. And I also think that if, you know, if we say, yeah, that's all I'll say for now. I've said so much, I'm sorry.
I just asked a question, because I, I've, I believe the opioid task force is under a guardrail. I mean, they're gonna hold the city accountable, and they're gonna, you know, if they feel the funds are not being used in a way that they, they would let their people be known that they don't agree with what's going on either. So that's under a guardrail.
You spoken yet? I don't think, so I'll let you speak, and then I've got Golub. Uh, Minhas, Healy?
My, really, my only concern is things getting bogged down with the city council. Um, if, maybe you can split that money up and have emergency fund, my mic's on. I just, I'm loud, so I kinda, um, but if it's left off to the council, uh, emergency meetings, you know, special, special meetings, there's quarrels, um, I, I just think it could be like, a wrench thrown in the works, if in fact, that there is a substantial emergency that, that some of these funds have to be spent, and, um, and then the clock is ticking. So, I, I don't know how we could separate the money between, uh, i- if that's doable, but, um, if we vote no, as, if this is a yes or a no vote, it kind of, one eliminates the other, and so that, that could be an issue. So, anyway.
Sorry, um, let's, councillor Golub, sorry, you've been waiting a long time.
No, good, thank you. I think that I'd like to move to table this, and I wanna share my rationale. I hear several people talking about the importance of not getting bogged down, of be having rapid response abilities, of getting the money to people, and we don't yet know for certain what our possibilities are with that. I hear the concern about too many cooks in the kitchen. I will always stand, you know, and some people might disagree, but as a city councillor, I believe my job is to represent and to, um, to, to, to listen as much as possible to the community. And I think that I'm, I am not ready to vote yes on eliminating the ability for the public to have the power to participate, like, like councillor Minhas was talking about. I think that there's a few different questions that I would like answers to. Um, I hear, I see the word may many times in the, in this, in the piece from DLS. Uh, can we give it teeth, is a question I'm hearing. Um, I, I would like to hear more, the two people that are here from the task force are both saying, let's not do this yet. I, I'm curious what else task force members would say to that.
Excuse me, councillor Golub, was that a motion to table?
I am about to make that motion.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Sure. So, I'm just, I'm looking through my notes, I have a lot of thoughts about this. We are often faced with, like, two bad, two not great choices. I wish that we had more choices available, but if this is yes, no, or table, um, I would, I'm moving to table.
Second.
And that is And that is non-debatable, so we'll do a roll call to table?
On the motion to table, Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
No.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion to table passes by nine yes.
The next item up is on, I believe it's page 27, the vote to name the fields. If I could, page 27, if I could have someone read that motion.
Order number FY25004, the city council moved that it be ordered in accordance with the City of Greenfield Code, Chapter 71, City, Town, Property, Article 2, Naming of Municipal Buildings, Facilities and Public Spaces, Section 8C. The Greenfield City Council names the fields behind the high school, the Donna Woodcock Fields. Majority vote required.
Second.
And this one did not go to committee. It's been through a very long, convoluted process, of which it's had unanimous positives from every board, the mayor, everything that's come before it. So I'll open up to discussion, counselors. We will do a roll call vote.
I have one comment to make.
Okay.
We're laughing because over Facebook, the signs are already up, which is, which is fine, but it kind of makes the vote silly, you know, but, so that's, that's what the inside joke is.
Counselor Master Tataro.
The Athletic Director, oh, here, tonight, I said, you know, this is finally coming to a vote, and my guess is it's going to be unanimous. He says, well, I hope so, because the signs are already up, so.
So let's, so let's put, oh, yes, Counselor Gordon.
Could someone just remind us a little bit, who is Donna Woodcock? In a very short-
Former principal of Greenfield High School.
Yeah. Thank you. A former principal of Greenfield High School, she was a softball coach, the field hockey coach, like state champions, and, yeah, she's like a local hero.
And died young.
Is that it for discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yep.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yep.
President Bonhamley, do you wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And if we can have the motion on page 28 read.
Order number FY25-005, the City Council order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts, the City Council moved that it be ordered in accordance with the City of Greenfield Code, Chapter 71, Town Property, City, Town Property, Article 2, Naming of Municipal Buildings, Facilities and Public Spaces, Section 8C. The Greenfield City Council names the baseball diamond at Veterans Field, Schuschnick Diamond. Majority vote required.
Second.
And I think a similar discussion would be great, I don't know if someone wants to address this real quickly.
I'm going to hand it over to Toranzo, because he played baseball for the guy.
Not very well, thank you. Thanks, Wade. No, Tom, Tom Schuschnick's been a staple here in Greenfield for ever. I actually just saw him at the high school not that long ago, randomly, I think it was at like my daughter's dance recital, he must have been there for, I don't know, must be his great-grandkids by now, who knows? But, yeah, he's, he's a great guy, we didn't always see eye to eye, but, but, man, that guy took care of that field. I mean, this has been Schuschnick Field for the last 40 years, I mean, since, since they revamped it, even though we now can officially say that, which is, well, hopefully.
This is his 50th year of coaching, by the way, yeah.
With that, should we do a roll call vote?
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yep.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We move on to page 30, the mayor's appointments. Counselor Goleb.
Order number fiscal year 25006, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter, Section 210, affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Franklin County Technical School Committee, Barbara Yetter, term to expire December 31st, 2024, filling remainder for term for Michael McIntyre. Historical Commission, Jeremy Ebersole, alternate, term to expire December 31st, 2027. Human Rights Commission, Jason Burns and Paki Wieland, both terms to expire December 31st, 2027, majority vote required.
I need a second on that?
Second.
A report from committee?
We did not meet this week, this month, this would have been the only item on our agenda.
Any discussion on the candidates for appointment? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I would like to thank everyone who came aboard to serve on these committees. We're really thankful to have people do that, because the city can't achieve our goals without it. So thank you to all of those that are appointed to these committees. We have no presentation of papers, any reports from committee, unfinished business, old business, new business. Before we get to this notice of zoning proposals, I did want to mention, under new business, that most of us know, or all of us know, that Penny Ricketts resigned from the city council, and I just wanted to give special thanks to her, again, because community service is so valuable, and it's hard to find people that will do it for that long, and the knowledge is really invaluable. And I know I speak on behalf of the whole council that we thank her for her service. And for other members in the community, there'll be a notice going out soon, if you want to step up and join our city council. And if, if any other counselors want to say anything, they're certainly welcome to at this point. But, but thank you, Penny, if you're out there listening to the city council meeting.
I hope she's not.
Shall we do, let's see, could we have the notice read? What page? Page 38. Counselor Bullock, do you have that up? This will be coming to EDC next month.
I do have it up, and am I just reading? Then the following zoning amendment proposals have been submitted to the Greenfield City Council for consideration, zoning amendment to Section 200-39, open space cluster developments?
That's it.
Okay, and there, I mean, I just, I think just to let people know, there's a joint hearing with EDC and the Planning Board on September 5th at 6:00 PM.
That's great, thank you for that. Motions for reconsideration, there are none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So it moves.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro? Sorry, I was talking, I didn't hear you. Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore? Sorry, not here. Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wondolowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhas?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Oh, yeah.
And the president, does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.